Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this city council meeting of February 13th, 2018, to order. It doesn't appear we have anybody who wants to speak in the open forum, so if you would all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would look for a motion approving the minutes of the special city council work session of January 20th, 2018, special city council work session of January 23rd, 2018, and the regular city council meeting of January 23rd, 2018.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second, and I second. At this time, we'll move on to hats off for hometown hits. Councilmember Garcia isn't here yet, so we'll move right to councilmember Troutman. Caught you off guard.
Thank you. Yeah, the only announcement that we had, we had our first winter farmer's market, and that was really well received. And that's continuing on. I believe it's, and I was hoping you were racing through fast, I didn't pull it up. But I believe that is that, I bet you councilmember Garcia can confirm that's this Wednesday, that we're... Steve? The farmer's market, when's the farmer's market, the next, our next winter farmer's market? Do you happen to recall that?
I'm sorry, I really don't know.
No.
Off the top of my head, no, I don't.
Well, I will, I'll defer to our elder hats-off hero, and I'll confirm the date here.
Oh, what?
Oh, sure, the, the, the winter's farmer, farmer's market. Is that, when's our next date?
I don't know.
I'll let us know.
Jim's not here?
March 1st.
Thank you.
You win $5, you know, I'm just kidding.
Oh, is that it?
That's it.
Councilmember Garcia, we had to jump over you for the hometown hits, but we're back at our home base now, so.
Thank you. I only have one item, and that is to say that a few weeks ago, we lost former city council member Ivan Ludeman. He was a very prominent member of our community. He worked for the Richfield School Systems for 30 years as a teacher, as a principal. And then he held various leadership positions in education, not only in the district, but at state-level committees and organizations. He also served on the Richfield City Council for two decades. He was someone, I think, that the community knew very well, not only through the school system, but through the city. And he served his community with distinction, and he served it well. And we offer his family our condolences.
Thank you. Councilmember Howard?
I actually have a councilmember Garcia-like list of events to mention. This week, there is an open house for Lindale Gardens. We had a work session on that about a month ago, well, no, maybe a few months ago. But this is an opportunity to, for folks to get an update on that project. And that's going to be at February 15th at 6:30 PM at Pizza Luce. And then next week, on February 20th at 10:00 AM, there's a very special event at City Hall. For the third year in a row, the Richfield Human Rights Commission is hosting a naturalization ceremony. For those that haven't had a chance to attend, it's really, it's become about one of the most hopeful moments of the year for me, where you just sort of sense this hope and optimism in community. And so, if you have a chance to attend, it'll be at City Hall Chambers, and you can welcome new Americans to Richfield and to our country. Also, on February 20th, 4 to 7 PM, there's another open house on our Lindale Avenue project at Oak Grove Church, that's 4 to 7 PM. Then, February 21st, our Richfield Chamber of Commerce is hosting an inaugural event called their Circle of Excellence Awards, honoring businesses throughout Richfield that have acquired some distinction over the year. And that's going to be at Best Buys Campus at 11:00 AM on February 21st. And then, the last item I wanted to mention is I wanted to thank all of our officers who were involved with the Super Bowl. The, as folks might have noticed, there was about a million people that came out to Super Bowl festivities over 10 days. And I may be a little biased, given my day job, but it went very, very well. But one of the reasons it went very, very well is it was a safe and successful Super Bowl. And I was personally over at the Mall of America for a good chunk of it. That's where our, the fan gallery was, and media from across the world were there. 1.4 million people were at the mall over 10 days. And as I was running off my head cut off, it was nice to see Richfield officers throughout the 10 days at the mall. And, you know, they were part of just an amazing effort across the state with officers that came to make it a safe Super Bowl. So, wanted to thank our Richfield officers, and personally, it just made me feel good to see our Richfield cops at the mall. And with that, I'll turn it over to councilmember Garcia.
But, you know, I did want to mention councilmember Howard was interviewed on WCCO-TV, and you did a wonderful job.
Well, thank you. My head's spinning, I don't even know what that interview was about, but I'm sure it was great, so, yeah.
Excellent. I just have one short thing that I wanted to let everybody know. So, a couple of weeks ago, I was able to participate in a meeting held in the community center by our health administrator and support services manager Jennifer Aniston, who's here. And we had members from our advisory board of health and Bloomington Public Health attend, as well as representatives from organizations working here in Richfield. And the focus of the meeting was to kick off a more formal conversation on becoming dementia-friendly Richfield and community. And this was really exciting to me because it's a national recognition, and it focuses on ensuring that we're a community that really is supportive of community members going through dementia. It also is a cross-generational initiative, so that we are welcoming and inclusive of our seniors. We're making sure that we are all working together to make sure that we are acting as a community. But it gets our youth involved, it gets organizations, residents, it's really a community-based effort. And when we had our board and commission interviews a few, a month ago or so, there was a lot of people that were very interested in supporting our seniors. And I just think this is a great designation that would be excellent for us to work towards. And I was very excited about the meeting, and I really hope that we continue the conversation and get that designation of dementia-friendly community.
Thank you. As councilmember Howard indicated, his background and his professional career is in communications, and he did a great job of laying the groundwork for me to talk about both the swearing-in ceremony and the circle of excellence. The Human Rights Commission of Richfield extended me an invitation to come and do some introductory comments to the swearing-in. And there's a lot of, fun isn't the right word, things that I do as the mayor of Richfield that really are an honor that comes with the office. It's not me, it's the office, and they like the mayor to represent the city at the swearing-in. And having an opportunity to welcome soon-to-be new citizens is something that I never expected, but it gives me great honor and pleasure to be put in a position to do that. And similarly, the starting of the Chamber of Commerce with the Circle of Excellence, the recognition of businesses in the city and residents of the city that either have the businesses or work here, is another honor because everything in Richfield is on the upswing, and the people that work here, as well as those that live here, do honor to the city by working hard, creating interesting opportunities, employment opportunities in businesses within the city. And so, I'm really looking forward to both those opportunities. And once again, I have to defer to the office, not to me personally, because that's the only reason I get asked. It's an extreme honor, and I only hope that I can represent the city as well as the new citizens in the business do. So, with that being said, a couple of weeks ago, we had a workforce in regards to creating some organic recycling in the city of Richfield. And I know that city manager Deitch, when we talked about the agenda last week, he'd suggested that I communicate with the councilmembers so that we didn't have an intermural battle, because we need to designate one of the councilmembers as liaison to the organics task force. So, I'm going to defer to the, to what has always been historically a very, very good working relationship among the councilmembers, and ask if anybody has somebody they want to nominate personally to be the liaison, or would like to step forward and act in that position themselves. We can have a dialogue, figure it out, and I think, I think we can come to a resolution pretty quickly. So, I'll look to the city council to let me know who it shall be.
Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez, is that an interest of yours to be liaison to that commission? I know that you've, it seems like an area that that might be of interest?
Yes, I would definitely be interested. And also, I know we have not had a conversation among the entire council, so I am absolutely more than happy to serve as the liaison. And I don't know if there's interest among other councilmembers, too. I would be happy to defer as well.
I'd be very happy to have councilmember Reagan Gonzalez take that liaison position.
Councilmember Garcia?
If she's willing to do it, I'm, it's good, it's good for me.
Now, see, you gave credit to my words about our ability to cooperate and get along. Do we need a motion, or just a designation that councilmember Reagan Gonzalez will be serving as liaison?
I think, I think either way, there's a, if you buy unanimous consent, basically, put her in that position, that's just fine, I think.
Congratulations.
Right.
Next matter is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion in that regard?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And then we move on to city manager with the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. For those in the audience here and at home, the consent calendar contains several separate items, which are typically acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved, and no further action on these items is necessary. Tonight, there are only two items on consent. Item A is consideration of the approval of the continuation of an agreement with the city of Bloomington for the provision of public health services for the city of Richfield for 2018. And item B, consideration of the approval of setting a public hearing to be held on March 13th, 2018 for the consideration of the issuance of a new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor licenses for Lindale Smokehouse, doing business as Lindale Smokehouse, located actually inside the Sherton Four Points at 7745 Lindale Avenue South. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
Thank you. I would move the consent calendar?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda belongs to councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott. The item for council consideration is a public hearing and consideration of the revocation of First Step LLC, Rich, doing business as Richfield Health Massage, a business, their business license for violations of operating with three unlicensed massage therapists and engaging in prohibited massage, and charges of gross misdemeanor prostitution. So, the city served a search warrant on First Step LLC, Richfield Health Massage, that's located on 7610 Lindale Avenue on January 11th, 2018. They did this due to the discovery of illicit activity occurring on the premises. The Richfield Police Department immediately closed this establishment. One therapist has been formally charged with a gross misdemeanor of prostitution. The licensee was also operating the business in violation of city code. There are three individual massage therapists that were engaging in prohibited massages. They failed to use the required coverings on their persons, the persons receiving a massage, and they did not attain the licensure required by the city and from the city, despite several notices from city staff about these requirements. And there's correspondence in the memo that confirms that. Two of the women have been formally charged with misdemeanor massage without a license. Based on the seriousness of the criminal charges and the other code violations, city staff is strongly recommending that the council revoke the establishment's business license. The licensee has a right to a public hearing before any action is taken pursuant to the city code. The city gave them written notice, and I understand that they're here this evening, so we're conducting a public hearing. And is there, is there anybody in the public that cares to speak on the matter? And if you would be so kind as to identify yourself and just sign in on the sheet, and tell us who you are and where you're from.
My name is Don Fajjol. I'm the attorney representing the business. Dear city council members, dear city managers, city attorney, and staff members, I'm here just to speak briefly about why the city council should not revoke my client's license. The, as I understand, that the incident occurred on January 11th of 2018, and since that time, the business has been closed down. My client has no income for the past one month and might continue down the road. I would like to ask the city to reconsider that revocation decision based on the following reasons. Number one, according to the city council's ordinances 1187.27, the revocation of the licenses, basically, there are two factors. One is for any violations of the code of, in that chapter. And the second, of conviction of any crime, misdemeanor, or any incorrect statements in the license applications. In this case, as the city council mentioned, there are allegations, charges of illegal activities such as prostitution or unlicensed practice on the premises. I would point to the attention of city council members under Minnesota law, and a charge plus a conviction can be the ground for revocation of the business. And as I understand, in this case, if there is a charge, I haven't seen any charges yet, but if there's a charge, then definitely there wouldn't be any conviction as of yet. And I've sent a copy of the case law to the city council. And at this point, all we have is allegations. And I understand the United States is a country of law. The accused should be given a chance to prove himself. He's not guilty until proven guilty. And according to...
Could I interrupt you just for a second? Because you said there's a two-part test, and I defer to our council here, too. But is it correct to, is it your understanding of the law that in addition to any conviction, it's also a failure to abide by the code may also be a basis for the revocation of the license? Is that correct?
The law, well, the city ordinances you have...
I just, if you won't answer my question, our city attorney will. Is that correct, that it's not simply a conviction, but it's also the failure to comply with the code? Is that correct?
Failure to comply in the code in the sense of like, unlicensed, there's no license to practice in this case, correct?
City attorney? So, we're not, we're not actually talking about criminal charges here. I just want to be clear, right?
Understand.
Okay.
According to the allegations of unlicensed practices on the premises, my client signed a copy, an agreement with everybody who comes to work at the premises. Before they begin to work, they sign a copy of agreement. And the agreement says they should not engage in any illegal activities on the premises. And in this case, there's, according to the police, there's allegation, there are unlicensed practices. My client, basically, when they come to work, two of the girls, two of the workers coming from California, one is from local, all of them have the certificate of completion of the work, of studies. Have the national certificate.
Can I, can I interrupt you to save you a little time? Were they in compliance?
They're not strictly. They don't have the city permit, but they're in the process of applying for it. My client has told them one time again, they cannot engage in massage without license.
I have another, and you said they're from California. Are these US citizens, or are they expatriates?
That we don't know, but they are, they're eligible to work. They can work in the state, so I don't know about the citizenship status. But they're coming from California, so they come here to work while they're putting their materials ready to apply for the city permit. While they're here, they don't have any income, and so they take customers when they come into the doors. That's a violation, we understand. But as my client has told them, they couldn't. But my client may not be very diligent in supervising them, but I would submit to the council members that because of the mismanagement, one month of closing the business is a severe enough punishment for Mr. Way. And I would like to, we talk about the new immigrants to this country. I would like to, Mr. Way, to tell you his experiences of being a new immigrant in this country. He came here 2014, spent hundreds of dollars getting the certificate from the school in Richfield, get the certificate to be able to work as a masseuse, work for three years, seven days a week, accumulate enough money, and put down almost $50,000 to remodel that place. Signed a three-year contract, monthly rent about $3,500, to start his own business, to realize his American dream. Now, when the people coming into the businesses, he has, he's signed contract with them, no illegal activities. They will apply for the licenses. So, I admit that, he admit, he will tell you that the ladies in the business do engage in some, they don't have the license before they engage in, but they're in the process of applying for it. So, I would say, I would submit that my client has learned a very expensive lesson. And if you are going to revoke his businesses, licenses, that would be a very severe punishment for a guy who has smacky, clean record. Not even traffic tickets.
Is he speaking, or is that the ending?
I'm going to ask him to speak after I'm done.
Okay, please be, how much, are you close to being done here?
I'm about a couple of minutes.
Can you take one more minute?
Sure.
Maybe 30 seconds.
Okay. All right, then I'm just going to stop here, let my client to speak. And I would just respectfully ask the city council members not to take away his livelihood. That's the only thing he can do in this country. Okay, I would ask Mr. Way to take the stand and speak.
Mr. Way, could you sign in and tell us where you're from?
I don't speak English.
I, I, I only, I only speak Chinese.
I haven't learned the language yet. I came here only for a very short time. I'm coming from a rural area in China. I didn't have enough, my family didn't have enough money to send me to school.
What, what area of China did you come from?
A little, little village in the Guangxi province. It's not easy for me to open a business. I don't know English, so a lot of people, it's easy for other people to do. I have to spend so much time and energy to get a single thing done. So, there are regulations of the cities, I'm not very familiar with it. Now, my business is closed down, and I still are not very familiar with the regulations yet. But the people that come here to work, look for work, I sign an agreement with them. One is oral, the other is written. They read it, and they signed it. Some of them coming from California. They drove here, so they have already spent a lot of money. I told them the requirements of the city.
I, I want to, I want to give you a chance to speak to your piece, but we need to keep this moving. I want to give you a chance to close. I have one question. These workers that were working for your company, were they also Chinese?
Excuse me, councilmember Troutman, why are you asking about citizenship and their place of origin? I'm just confused.
I'm asking because while it's in fact the women who've been charged, or not been charged, but, but the investigation has shown have engaged in certain unlicensed activity, it's not in fact the women that I'm primarily concerned about. It's in fact the organization that facilitates this that I'm concerned about. I don't believe this business has treated them with the same kind of courtesy that I was treated with when I was a guest in China. And what I shared with him is that when I went to China... And what I shared with him is that when I went to China, I was treated with courtesy, I was treated with respect, I was treated well. And this company, I don't know you, sir, but I understand from the report the practices of your company, 你的公司. And so there is no second chance for this kind of conduct for your company in our city according to my vote. I would, um, move to close the, the hearing unless, uh, do you have, do you have anything else you'd like to say?
我有，我有要说的.
Yes, I have. I have videos in my store. The way I treat my workers, you can take the videos to see, to see if I treat them right. There's recordings, there's videos, how I treat my workers, you can see it from the video.
I, those videos are not a part of our record here. Mayor, do I have the authority to close the hearing at this point?
Um, check and see if there's anyone in the audience.
All right, is there anybody else?
I guess I'd still like to hear from folks. And I, I never like, I mean, I'll, I'll vote against closing the public hearing personally, if that's a motion.
You want to hear from the owner?
I just-
Well, no, that's what I said, offering if anybody in the audience wants to speak.
Sure.
So-
Yeah, is there anybody else that'd like to speak? Anybody else? I'd move to close the hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would advise just to ask if the licensee has any closing remarks. Um, and then it's up to the entire council if they want to close the public hearing or not. But, um, it doesn't appear that anybody else from the audience wishes to speak. Um, this is a, a, a hearing to give the licensee and the business owner due process. And so I think it's important to allow them to, to finish his statement. Um, granted, we don't need it to go on for another half an hour, but I do think it's important to give the, the business owner the chance to, to finish up his statement so that he can fulfill his-
Thank you, Councilor. The record indicates that Councilmember Troutman asked him to close, and he did, and then they continued the questioning. So he, he, it's been recommended that he, he close. If he, Councilmember Troutman, if you'd like to get the final comment from the owner, that'd be great, but otherwise you can move forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we're not interested in discussing videos or evidence that's not here tonight. If you have a final statement or comment, we'd be glad to hear it.
I just have one closing comment. I object the way that council members treat my client. Basically, it's clear that you acted out of bias in my client's and, uh-
Okay, it's duly noted, Councilmember Troutman.
I would move, uh, with the comments being closed, I would, uh, move that we, um, uh, approve staff's recommendation and, uh-
Close the public hearing.
Oh, excuse me, I, I move that we would close the, the public hearing.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman, do you have a motion?
I would move that, um-
Okay, I have a, just have a question for staff. Um, I, I, this is the first time a motion like this has been before me in my time on the council. I just have a question about our city's past practices. Uh, if a business has been, if this type of activity's been conducted or been found by the police and what just what our practice has been in terms of licensing in, in these instances? Just because it's the first time it's been before me in my time on the council.
Councilmember Howard and councilmembers, this is the process that we have to go through when, um, there's violations under the city ordinance, um, by bringing it to the council to determine whether or not the license should be revoked, suspended, or no action taken at all. So based upon our investigation as staff, this is the recommendation that we're bringing forward.
Have, have we had, have there been prior instances, um, where, where the staff, staff and council has moved to revoke licenses? I mean, not exactly similar, but just, I'm just trying to just gauge the, the, how we've handled cases where there's been serious violations or-
In, in my time on the police department, I don't recall, um, us taking action against someone's license.
Chief, if, if I may, a couple of questions in, in terms of the, the warrant and the investigation. Um, I'm assuming that whoever executed the warrant prepared reports and you've reviewed those?
Yes.
Um, was there a manager on site at the time the warrants were executed?
No, there was not.
Was it just the three employees there?
There were the three employees. Uh, I was there ten minutes after the warrant was executed. There was no manager on site.
And no supervision?
No.
And it's my understanding that, that, uh, there's, was one charged with prostitution and the other two for lack of proper cover and other violations of the code, correct?
Correct.
So multiple, multiple violations of the code?
Correct.
With no one there supervising, managing, or otherwise overseeing the operation?
Correct.
Okay, so three individuals that were nothing more than employees?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let me ask you this, because it is always is the case, we're offered some alternatives. Um, can you think, I mean, given the circumstances, given the fact that, that it's, it's, it's got some fairly strict ordinances and everything, uh, it's my assumption that we, when we put that, that ordinance in place, the, the understanding was it'd be supervision, management, or somebody on place that would be responsible for what was going on within the, the, the business. Okay, um, is there any, any circumstances, just to, to make sure that, that due process is met? Can you think of any circumstances or any conditions we could impose that would give you any comfort in, in that operation being above board and compliance with all our codes?
Um, as the director of public safety, I, I don't feel that there would be because, um, while I can't get into the entirety of the investigation, we did come up with some situations that this has been going on for a long time.
Okay. All right, thank you.
With that, I would, um, I would move that we permanently revoke the, uh, business license, a First Step LLC located at seventy-six ten Lyndale Avenue South, Richfield, Minnesota, and direct staff to bring a resolution, uh, with findings supporting the revocation back to the city council for approving, uh, approval at its next meeting.
I'd second. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. Item six on the, uh, council agenda calls for a public hearing in consideration of the approval of a resolution specifying the use of funds from the Community Development Block grant allocation for two thousand eighteen and authorizing execution of a subrecipient agreement with Hennepin County and any required third-party agreements. The historical context is that forty-seven thousand two hundred dollars is proposed to be allocated to Housing and Redevelopment Authority for the deferred loan program, which provides no interest, thirty lo- thirty, excuse me, thirty-year loans up to thirty thousand dollars to low-income homeowners to address health, safety, and property maintenance needs. This program has been in existence since nineteen eighty-four and is administered by the city of Hennepin County. In the past year, one loan was completed and eight loans were started. Twenty households are currently on the waiting list for the program. One hundred thousand dollars is proposed to be allocated to the HRA to either purchase and demolish a substandard property and work with a nonprofit developer to construct a new affordable home or to purchase and rehabilitate an existing home. This newly constructed or rehabilitated property would be sold to a household earning eighty percent of the eighty, of the area median income or less, sixty-eight thousand dollars for a family of four. Fifty thousand dollars is proposed to be allocated to the HRA to either purchase and, excuse me, fifty thousand dollars is proposed to be allocated to the HRA for a first-time homebuyer down payment assistance program administered by city staff. This is a pilot program aimed at low and moderate-income Richfield renters who are looking to buy homes in Richfield. It will provide no interest, deferred loans up to a ten thousand dollars to use towards down payment and closing costs. Previously, each city was required to individually allocate the public service funds. Beginning in the two thousand eighteen funding cycle, fifteen percent of each city's allocation will be set aside and distributed through a single combined process covering all the cities in the county, CDBG program. For Richfield, the amount set aside for public services will be thirty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. That is only an estimate and is separate from the city's direct allocation. Public service, it, public service agencies that have received funds from the city in the past, home, home line, cap, HE, and bridging have been notified of the new process. City staff will participate in the county review of the public service requests. Um, staff, do you have some additional information you'd like to pass on before we open the hearing?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, no, I would just say, um, you know, Richfield has been a recipient of CDBG for decades. Um, and we feel very good about the way we've used those funds. Um, they've helped our low and moderate-income families, they've helped people with service needs. You may, uh, be aware that the, uh, the president's most recent, um, budget proposal eliminates CDBG in its entirety. Um, and we're certainly hopeful that that does not happen. So with that, I would stand for any questions you might have.
Okay, um, this is a public hearing. Is anybody in the audience care to come up and offer information or questions or anything else regarding this, uh, proposal? This is an open or public meeting. Is anybody care to speak to it? Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, I would move to approve a resolution authorizing the use of funds for the two thousand eighteen urban, urban Hennepin County Community Development Block Grant Program and authorizing execution of a subrecipient agreement with Hennepin County and any required third-party agreements.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The resolution passed. Item number seven is Council Regan Gonzalez.
The next item is a public hearing in consideration of the approval of a resolution granting approval for the final plat of the Cedar Point Commons Second Edition. The city council approved final development plans and a preliminary plat for the Cedar Point Commons Second Edition on August twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen. Since that time, the retail building has been completed and plans for a daycare user for the northern half of the site were approved in late twenty seventeen. The proposed plat will combine four existing parcels into two new parcels. All comments from the city engineering department, the city attorney's office, Hennepin County, and Three Rivers Park District have been addressed or included as stipulations in the resolution. Any, um, additions from staff on this?
Um, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, as, uh, Councilmember Gonzalez reported, there was a preliminary plat approved here in August of two thousand and sixteen. This is materially identical to that plat, um, and I view this really as a housekeeping item. Thank you.
Excellent. Um, is anybody here in the public to speak on this item? This is a public hearing. Is anyone here to speak on this item? I would like to make the motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public meeting is closed.
And I'd like to make the pro, uh, the motion to approve a resolution granting approval for the final plat of the Cedar Point Commons Second Edition.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ordinances pass. Um, next item on the agenda is item eight, and Councilmember Howard, you have the honor of talking to salaries.
I have consideration of the approval of the first reading of an ordinance amending subsection two-ten dot zero-one of the city code related to city council salaries. Chapter two, section two-ten of the city code establishes the salaries of the city council. Subsection two-ten dot oh-one subdivision five provides that salaries of the council members shall be reviewed by the city council by May first in each year in which an election is held pursuant to section two-hundred of the code. An ordinance amending the salaries established by this section must not take effect until after the next succeeding municipal election. If the city council approves this ordinance, the next city council salary adjustment would be effective January first, two thousand and nineteen. Um, and with, I know that it's in our packet for folks to look at the historical context and, um, where Richfield, uh, aligns. I just think it's worth calling out the, the specific numbers for folks. So this, uh, currently, the salary, uh, for mayor is eleven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. For council members, it's eight thousand eight hundred and nine dollars. Uh, with this adjustment, the salary would, for mayor would be eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars. For council, nine thousand and fifty-one dollars. So with that, I'll make the motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance amending subsection two-ten dot zero-one of the city code related to city council salaries and schedule the second reading for February twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is passed. Item number nine calls for the consideration of the approval of a resolution approving the contract with the Police Lieutenant's Teamsters three-twenty for the contract period January first, two thousand and eighteen through December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract. City staff has completed labor negotiations with the Police Lieutenant's Teamsters three-twenty union. The provisions of the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen labor co- labor agreement cover all of the employees in this union, which consists of three positions. The two-year contract provides a wage adjustment of three percent in two thousand and eighteen and a wage adjustment of three percent in two thousand and nineteen. The other provisions of the tentative agreement include up to seventy-five dollars per month increase in the city's contribution towards health insurance and a fifty cents per month increase towards employee's single dental coverage. Agreement to accept the same level of contributions that management and general services employees will be receiving in two thousand and nineteen for health and dental insurance coverage and an increase in clothing allowance of fifteen dollars in two thousand and eighteen and additional fifteen dollars in two thousand and nineteen. Um, Assistant City Manager Dymitrenko negotiates all her contracts, and I have to say she does an excellent job, and we have relatively little, um, contract disputes that are ever presented, at least to the city council, I'm sure be tied closed doors. It may be a little bit more hot and tense, but, uh, really appreciate how well you do in working with, with the union members on, on staff and city employees because it, 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 a, a, a good working relationship starts with contracts and people are happy with them and, and the staff and council are happy with them. Then it just makes for a much better work relationship. Any comments you'd like to offer?
Um, Mayor, Council, well, thank you. I, I appreciate those comments and, um, it's really a team effort, um, both on management side, work with Assistant HR Manager Jesse Swenson is at the table with me, but we always confer with city manager and department directors, and then, of course, working with the union reps. And we do try to, you know, have a good relationship and as we move towards negotiations. So happy to have this, um, contract also, another two-year contract, and hopefully two more before you all soon.
Thank you, and once again, I appreciate all the parties coming together and presenting us with this, this agreement. Uh, with that being said, I would move the approval of a resolution approving the contract with Police Lieutenant's Teamsters three-twenty for the contract period January first, two thousand and eighteen through December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, resolution is passed. The Councilmember Garcia has item number ten.
Uh, this item for consideration of the approval of agreements with nonprofit organizations to provide social services to the city of Richfield and authorization of the city manager to execute agreements with those agencies. Consistent with prior year, years, the two thousand and eighteen city budget includes funding for organizations that provide social services that are deemed to be a benefit to the, to our city and the community in general. This budget includes seventy thousand four hundred and eighty dollars for this purpose. In December of two thousand and seventeen, staff distributed a request for proposals for city services to nonprofit agencies serving the city of Richfield for services provided in two thousand and eighteen. The proposals represent a wide variety of social services offered to Richfield residents. The total amount requested for the ten proposals exceeded what the city had available by fifty-two thousand seventy dollars. Um, the folks that got together to, um, and this committee included Lynette Chambers, city staff, Julie Urban, city staff, um, Mary Olafson, community- um, Mary Olafson, community member, Camilo DeSantis, community member, and myself. Uh, those of us that serve on this committee are pretty well familiar with, uh, s- social service agencies that serve Richfield, and, uh, and so it took us about two and a half hours to really get into the proposals and, and discuss them. You know, we, one of them, we had to take into consideration the types of services provided, the target populations, past performance of the social service agencies, among other criteria. Of the ten proposals received, two were not recommended for funding. Mida, based on past performance in the Richfield community, uh, education, because the population to be served doesn't meet the funding criteria. And, uh, we do, we do have a certain criteria that needs to be met. This is money that, uh, has to be well-spent, because it does go to a lot of folks that, uh, really are in need of these services, and we wanna make sure that they are served to the full capacity, uh, as possible. The, the funding, uh, was allotted to, um, uh, the other thing I wanted to say is, uh, these organizations have to have uh, nonprofit status, which is five-oh-one, C-three. We have to look at the residents, uh, in Richfield that are served, target populations, and what, and the partnership that they have uh, with the city of Richfield. And we take into consider, into consideration the low-income folks, regardless of race, cultures, ethnicity, and the value to the community, um, the cost of services and the person served. So we really are quite diligent in terms of, um, making sure that, uh, all the criteria are met, because these folks that, uh, receive funding serve our vulnerable populations, and of the folks that were awarded, um, funding headway, which is formerly storefront, uh, awarded eight thousand dollars, cornerstone, thirteen thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars, people with capes, nine thousand two hundred and fifty, trails, four thousand dollars, Veep, nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, Loaves and Fishes, seven thousand five hundred dollars, Richfield Ready, one thousand five hundred dollars, and Senior Community Services, seven thousand dollars, which is a total of seventy thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. I think we have, um, I think these organizations, uh, really have, um, have shown through, you know, the, the paperwork that they've submitted and the outcomes and folks served and their performance that they have done, uh, good job in serving, uh, the city of Richfield. I know Julie Urban is here, do you have any, anything to add, Julie?
I really don't, I think you covered it, I just wanna thank the council for, uh, dedicating funds for, uh, these organizations, they serve our most needy and vulnerable residents, and as you can see, there's lots of needs based on, um, the fund requests, and so we appreciate that we have some funds to support their efforts.
Thank you, and I, and I think Julie can attest to the, you know, um, to the fact that we really kind of, uh, look, look at this, at, at all these proposals and, uh, in a way that we can hopefully, um, you know, do the best that we can to serve our community. So thank you for doing that, Julie. So I will move that, uh, unless there's any other questions.
I just wanted to quick thank council member Garcia for her work in this, uh, for, for a number of years, this has been an area where council member Garcia has done, done the work, and, and it goes beyond just, uh, going through each organization, I think, uh, council member Garcia knows, uh, and has history with each of these organizations, many that have just long track records of, of doing good work in the community, and so, uh, it's it wonderful that we're able to provide some resources, but also help kind of tell the story of what these organizations are doing in Richfield, so thank you.
Thank you, council member, and, and I also wanna highlight too, the community members that serve are real familiar, because, you know, they're part of communities of the social service agencies, so, and they have a history, and they're very, they, their contribution to this committee is, is, uh, very much appreciated. So with that, I will move the approval of an agreement between the recommended nonprofit organizations in the city of Richfield and authorize the city manager to execute agreements for services with those agencies.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Resolution passes. City managers report.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, I really don't have anything specific to report.
Thank you. Um, claims and payroll?
I will move claims and payroll, and if we think we must sign it.
I will second, all in favor?
Hi.
There being no further matter, uh, addressed, uh, I'll adjourn the meeting.